The thirty-third meeting of the Twenty-First Council will come to order. Everyone is here tonight. Counselor Lewis has been excused. Counselor Winters will be late coming to the meeting, but you will be here tonight. To the area, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is to add. I spoke with the Housing Authority today, and there are three thousand people on a waiting list, waiting for housing, three thousand families. They're not taking any new applications. We've got a crisis situation with Ten City. I know all the tenants will move to the property where the A and P used to be located. That has been a problem because, I guess, the property owner has said they cannot be there. Have we can look at MBC to provide housing at the old jail for members of the community? You've got a male living in Ten City? Because I know one time I think that we did use the old MBC for housing for homeless population.
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, it's my understanding in report that there are vacant areas for members from Ten City to go to the old jail right now. So that facility is not currently at capacity, so there is openings for that. And we try to articulate this to those living there.
When you say you're articulating the decision where these people are there, have you not sat down in depth? How can these people find a place where they can be? It's they've been moved from the old city property to the property where A and P is at, and now a lot of residents service at the place are saying there's problems that are being shared. You know, we need to work with the homeless population, trying to find a place. I know there's not an easy answer or no easy solution. And I'm told from the Housing Authority that there's a waiting list, and they're not taking any new applications, and three thousand people are on the waiting list. I mean, we're in a crisis situation, and we need to work together in collaboration because people are coming to me daily asking, "What are you doing about Ten City?" And we've got to come up with some answers.
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, couldn't agree more. We spent almost a month out there, through outreach saturation, with every homeless provider that exists around our city. We've had a lot of success moving some folks into apartment apartments. We've had success moving some into sessions programs. The folks that are currently understanding there are there by choice, and that's their choice, I understand that, that they do not want to go to a shelter because there is openings where they need to work for shelter. And we're in that situation where what do we exactly do if we're looking for alternatives moving forward? We have had success with our rent and home program. We've had four and forty house. We have not directly worked with the Housing Authority currently on this because of this backlog situation, but every day we have folks out there trying to find a solution.
Thank you, Senator Congress. Thank you very much, Counselors.
Thank you. Mr. Montano, I just have a follow-up question. Some of the complaints that I've heard about staying at the emergency or the winter shelter at the old jail is that they have to leave so early in the morning. Have we considered maybe having, making two trips at maybe the same time now so people come back into town who have to work or show up someplace at a very early hour? And then maybe a later shift to deliver people back into town so they don't have to get up at four o'clock in the morning or whatever time it is?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, of course, his rescue mission that we contact is the provider for the West Side Shelter, so Pastor Hill and the administration and I'm sure Counselors are in constant conversations about that. The reason for the six o'clock departure time is that's when breakfast is served at their shelter, and it's often what some of the programs start from the beginning. And coupled with, you know, that's kind of the beginning of the day for a lot of the programs, coupled with the breakfast issue. We have had certain conversations about another option. Extending that time, we did hear that concern of not wanting to get up too early and the issue that the lights were up late at night when the dress up.
So I appreciate that, and I did tour the facility last year, excuse me, and was impressed by the size and people who worked out there who are, you know, truly their hearts are in the right place. I think that it might be cost-effective to provide additional funding or whatever it takes to allow for subsequent trips after the six o'clock time. Not all of those people are getting up, you know, to be somewhere at that very early hour. I think that would be cost-effective rather than that. And I understand some people don't want to go there regardless, you know, but that is one of the complaints that we've heard, you know, that I've heard at least for about a year.
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson will turn to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Gibson. We have other questions. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, Major Dr. Chaplin on this one. I know that we have immediate need for the Ten City people, and we're working on that as best we can, but I believe, I know that we have a long-term issue that is not being resolved. When we look at our last report on affordable or affordable housing in the city, over the last seven years, multi-million dollars, we've provided one hundred and fourteen units per year. That doesn't cover anything. So would someone please tell me what we have in the future to provide mass housing for the number of people who need it?
Thank you.
Mr. President, Counselor Jones. Staff is coming to examine.
For the record, could you mention who you are? We all know.
Sure. My name is Dr. Chaplin, the Director of Department of Family and Community Services. Mr. President, Counselor Jones, staff is looking at a lot of different possible ways to go forward in terms of rehab and existing housing stock, which would be cost-effective and perhaps reduce more units towards the future. I think that's probably the number one thing we're looking at.
Thank you, Reverend. Just to hear that, I was very excited to be included in some of those conversations because having to do with some of our job partners now, it seems the only way we can go now to help the community and the people around the streets without homes. Thank you. Can you contact my office at one six zero to talk with you?
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, we'd love your input.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Ben.
Just briefly, I know there's some people who are going to speak about this tonight on the public comment. I would point out that, first of all, with regard to the present situation, I think it's down to a very small number of tents. And we are, I think, the city, along with the organizers of the existing site where the remaining tents are, have been in contact with a nonprofit provider in the short term is their parking lot, and we'll see if that bears fruit, hopefully it will. We also had a really productive meeting yesterday morning. Mr. Chaplin was there. I appreciate all the work that he's done. It was with all the providers. It wasn't really a meeting that had been called because of what developed with the Ten City and the camping. But I invited some of the organizers of that, that moved to that site to attend, and I think they, there was a good dialogue after the regular meeting, which was about all the efforts that are being done to coordinate homeless services throughout Albuquerque. A lot of people working on it, a lot of nonprofit agencies, and people who are advocates for veterans and so forth. So from every angle, I mean, the spectrum of homelessness is huge. It's really broad, and it's everything from folks, veterans coming back from the wars, PTSD, to long-term substance abusers. And of course, the issue of homelessness and mental health, behavioral health are really intertwined because when you live on the streets, I mean, you do tend to have a, you know, gain a distorted sense of reality and hopelessness, which does tend to lead to drug abuse. But even the folks who advocated for the present Ten City location, which eventually going to have to move because it's on a private site, even they acknowledge that some of the people who are there are sort of the last ones after every, after every kind of effort, every kind of offer has been made. These are the people who are, you could say they're falling through the cracks, but also, in some cases, these are people who don't trust anyone to help them, and want to just be able to remain on the street for whatever reason. So we have to recognize the broad spectrum of people that we're talking about, and it's certainly, since the shooting of James Boyd, it's been a real priority of mine over the last, going on a year now. And I think, you know, Mr. Boyd's that we can all, you know, we owe him a debt of gratitude for what he represents about the homeless community. And Mr. Boyd was in and out of jail, in and out of shelters, some of the shelters abandoned because his behavior was so excessive, you know, excessively hard to control. So, I mean, we have, we have that spectrum. We've got to deal with it as a community. A lot of people ask, you know, a lot of people tell me, "What are you doing about it? What is the city doing about it?" And the city's got to fix this. And yeah, the city's a huge part of the fix, but I think we all, as a community, have to address it as well. We all, you know, we've all got to step up and join that conversation and not just point fingers. So thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Ben. We do have a stack of folks, so Counselor Sanchez, followed by Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quickly, the city voters and the county voters in November voted for a slight tax increase to address this issue. The county commission has currently taken on this issue, and we worked with the members of the Bernal County Commission. I think it's paramount that we work closely with the county on the tax because a lot of the residents that are in Albuquerque are going to be impacted, and all the residents throughout Bernal County if they implement this tax. So they are looking at generating, I think, forty-two million dollars. I think probably fifteen, eighteen million would go for these needs for the mentally ill and also the homeless populations here in our community. But I hope that we can continue to dialogue with the Bernal County Commission if they do implement this tax and making sure that we have a plan in place to address the needs of our community. And we definitely have some more needs. Also, I would ask that our staff talk to the people with affordable housing because the other housing department is no longer a part of the city of Albuquerque, it's a separate entity, and we have not been briefed one time on what is going on. I heard today that what was going on is they were not taking any new applicants, and they've got three thousand people on a waiting list citing this council, and the administration should be briefed at least quarterly on what is going on with the housing department to keep us updated on what's going on.
I just wanted to add and to kind of just reiterate what Counselor Ben was stating, and also Counselor Sanchez does, is that, you know, up here, it's really difficult, you know, with the situation with the homeless, and I know, you know, we need housing, and it's paramount that we get housing, as Counselor Jones stated, is that, you know, we've only built one hundred and fourteen affordable housing master, but we can't lose sight of the underlying issue that is in our community and why these people are homeless because of their mental health issues, there's drug addiction, there's veterans services that are needed, and it's really key that we address these because without that, all the housing, all the housing in the world that we provide for them isn't going to, isn't going to solve the problem. And I do want to add to what Counselor Sanchez said is to really thank Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Stevens for bringing forth this task. You know, we voted, seventy-three percent of the people in our community voted to support some type of mental health services for housing and other issues that we have in our community, and I hope that, I know it was the first, but I hope that we can, you know, really continue on that path because at the end of the day, somebody said, he said, "We're really, we're in this together." I think it's important as a community, we look for solutions and don't look to point fingers at each other. And I really found it very interesting that Mr. Javier Benavides, who is from SWAP, he put something that I had been actually writing, something for editorial, and he really talked about how as a city, we're better than this, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, is that we are better than this, and we really have to work together to seek out solutions because Albuquerque is, I think, could be an example for the entire nation, and we've worked together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Counselor Ben. And I agree with you, and actually, there are some folks here from another organization that have been doing the ominous work for something that a lot of us, on occasion, pay attention to and didn't yet, and we don't have that kind of luxury. I agree with you, Counselor Ben, Sanchez, Jones, Gibson. Words mean something, and I in no way consider myself spokesperson for the homeless community or folks who are at this time or have been at Camp Faith, but it's very instructive to me to know that these people want to be recognized as such, that I honor that, and I will, as I have, consider and continue to refer to those persons as being at Camp Faith and not Ten City. I think it's very important, and I commit myself to that. I also wanted to make sure that Counselor Penya's words aren't lost because when he says that we have to make sure that we all work together, it's not just a soundbite. It's really something that we need to entertain, we need to inculcate, we need to become part of. Because it's very easy to say something and then walk away from it. We need to be part of it, and we need to dedicate ourselves to that kind of work. And then, thanks to the Southwest Organizing Project, all of the folks who have done, as I say, all the hard work that's come forward, will continue to do the hard work, I know, because I know those folks. We are now under general public comments. We have a number of people that are allowed to speak tonight. We're also very fortunate to have a colleague, Commissioner Danny O'Malley, to speak to this. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Thank you for the privilege of speaking, and I've kind of got ahead of a few people, but I do appreciate that opportunity. I wanted to comment a couple of things. The first thing is I do want to thank many of you here who were very supportive of the mental health tax that several of you talked about. There are many people, as we mentioned, who have dual diagnosis, being of mental health and also drug addiction, some case of self-medication going on, and the importance of giving resources to those people. Nobody likes to raise taxes. If that's what's before us, we have to have more resources. There's a lot of ideas out there, there's a lot of people who are working there in part, and the issues that we're talking about, but there's not enough money, there's not enough resources, and there's not enough money for housing. Housing is also a very big component of this, and, you know, we are in a situation, as we mentioned, it was a crisis situation, nobody anticipated that because of the very depressed economy, especially in Albuquerque, that we would have, you know, a situation like this. But we have to be proactive, and there are short-term solutions, and there are long-term solutions, and I think we need to get the actions, and I'm, of course, very excited about the opportunity of working with this city council and doing those kinds of things. I'm also here to support the bill to stop, I would say, bulldozing the ballgame. That, the whole idea of working with the Sierra Club, my understanding as a mayor, was working, or his people were working with the Sierra Clubs and other folks to come up with a plan, a consensus plan on how to move forward with some of the changes to the ballgame. And this, my understanding of what happened is that all of a sudden, the mayor ordered, I guess, the departments or whatever to go in there and start tearing up and building this trail. This was a plan that was not agreed to, and that is incredibly disrespectful. The ballgame belongs to all of us, and it's a living river. I think that's an important understanding. This is a living river. It's, it's got its own ecosystem, and I think people appreciate the harmony. This isn't San Antonio. This isn't a ditch that was made into some sort of feature. This is a living river, and we have to be understanding of how people feel about it, that it has enormous value to us, and we'll need a safety system. Let's not mess it up. And I support your bill that you're sponsoring, Counselor Ben and Counselor Sanchez, to stop destroying the ballgame. Thank you very much, Peter.
I agree with Counselor Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner O'Malley, before you leave, I think for sure Counselor Ben will have to say.
Just quickly, Commissioner O'Malley, thanks for coming down to speak, and I appreciate your support with regard to the ballgame. I wanted to just quickly point out the issue of housing, because when we talk about housing people, I think we're very much talking about what's called supportive housing. So it's not just about getting somebody an apartment or a room that they're housed. They really need to have that support, and we're talking about, as we were talking about earlier, specific categories of support depending on the individual's needs. And I think when people talk about the proposed tax, I've heard that there isn't a plan. Well, I would venture, I would really venture to disagree on that. With Counselor Winters and myself sponsored the task force, it came out clearly delineating, and this wasn't new information, I mean, as to the need, but that task force also clearly delineated the costs of such a program. And we know that it's going to involve local funding, we also need help from the state, and there are people working out of the state as we sit right now. And of course, it includes the city programs, which will spend millions and millions of dollars every year, but we need to focus on better. So really appreciate you coming down to speak.
Thank you, and I'm glad that you mentioned that. I think a lot of people think, well, you just put a family in the house, you put, that's important that people have safe shelter. But, you know, there's also the issue of continual care, and that's the other thing that has come up as a result of our conversations also with the city and the county and some of you, as you mentioned, on the task force, is that we need to continue with care, and you need to have those supportive gaps around services where people will be successful. And putting people in jail is not the solution. We have, I mean, we have, but, you know, we're trying to provide mental health services in our jail. That's expensive, and it's not working. So we're looking at, you know, how do we basically move those resources and really start, you know, to, I think, take, to deal with this, this problem, and as someone mentioned, I think, Commissioner Penya, we're better than this, and we are better than this. Thank you.
We appreciate, appreciate your support, appreciate all of your support. President, supported Commissioner. Now we are, this speakers, we have Barbara Prothas, followed by Nora Anaya and Vincent Lewis. Barbara Prothas.
Barbara's not here, so she asked me to leave a statement.
All right.
Structural economic problems are destroying the United States. The new economy, as our president calls it, has created the opportunity for one thousand super-rich individuals to accumulate more money than the rest of us combined. The little people bailed out the bankers who made off with our homes and pensions. We are jailing more people than any country in the world, and yet our problems increase unavowed. Albuquerque is the shame of New Mexico. Denial of reality is the official policy of the bank. Everyone else can see the naked betrayals and his crude lawlessness. The homeless are preyed upon by our police, and the mayor chases them hither and yon. Enough is enough. The homeless are the gay, lesbian, and transgender children thrown out by Christian families from the churches, and your district counselor, Jones. The homeless are veterans betrayed by our government over and over and who are suffering and dying in alleys and on the streets while patriotic neighbors fly bags, and your district counselor, Lewis. The homeless are substance abusers from families you blame in the South Valley and families you don't blame in your neighborhoods, Counselor Harris. The homeless are children who were born with disabilities our schools could not fix and to families who did not have resources to hire caregivers and then became overwhelmed in your neighborhoods, Counselor Winters. These are the castaways who have been given their last chance. Many have been given tough love and are following through the responsibilities, now to the responsibility of no one. We need a permanent location in our city. Other cities do it, we can do this. And I'm telling you all, you give us a piece of land in this city, there are some organizations right here who will maintain that and take care of these people because our city needs to do this. Give us a piece of dirt, we'll handle it.
Man, could we have your name?
Sure, it's Kathy Brown, Brown Tucker. Kathy Brown, you're welcome.
Next speaker is Nora Anaya, followed by Vincent Lewis, followed by Emma Sanghala.
My name is Nora Tachia Sanaya. Mr. Cardino, Councilman Cardino, and Counselor Winters, I need to explain some things that have been heavy on my heart, trying to figure out some solutions. Someone told me why the city should be responsible for the crisis of the homeless. Well, anyway, in my educated opinion, after doing research and speaking to the homeless, I'm an advocate, the city is responsible for making them homeless, and you keep tearing the motels down. Please stop. That could be one of the very important things to do. Thirty years, they've been, there's been a homeless sightings all over Barrelos. I'm a Barrelenia, I'm here there, born and raised, not living there now, but I can find a place I remove there. Facts, it's all intertwined. I believe a human, humane society should be started now. Homeless from nuisance days? People have homes, they got kicked out for their children doing wrong. That's not right. That needs to stop. Homeless from the floods in the area of Barrelos? It wasn't necessarily floods, it was the two minutes that are up. Oh my gosh, I've got to go fast. Homeless from floods, homeless from the jail? There's a slew of people coming from jail now, and they are going to be the next homeless. Please understand. Minor infractions, arrests, need to be stopped. I have a slew of things I need to tell you, and I need to be involved also when you have your meetings because we're living in the streets of them. We are watching over them. We are not going to waver, we are going to stay, and we are going to help them because we're the Green Cards Club.
Mr. President, thank you again. The light goes on, you have two minutes. The bell and the yellow light went on. You have thirty seconds, and then the red light will come on, and then your time is up.
Vincent Lewis, Vincent Saint Vincent, SWAP, Southwest Organizing Project, also Barrelenio. Two weeks now, we've been working with the homeless out there, Ten City, also now at Camp Faith. There's been a lot of immediate, you know, transition and progress. You know, we've got motel vouchers, we got these guys placed in motels, and, you know, people are out there feeding them and stuff like that, but it's not enough. And so, you know, we had a meeting yesterday, you know, the, I guess, service providers of the city and then also from around the state, and consensus is calling for a long-term Ten City and Camp Faith. And members of SWAP and Equal Justice and different advocates are, you know, that's what they're asking for, this piece of dirt, so that we can work on it. Based on Las Cruces's format, I think we can make that work. I've never once seen Mr. Montano down there, I want to make that clear. And in the beginning, you said there's less cats on the street. Well, there are less cats on the street, but there's more homeless on the street. Let's see, we don't have a lot of time to do this, and I need a lot more than two minutes, so I'm asking that you can call me back for a presentation rather than two minutes, if you can do that for me, please. Right now, the people that are in the motels, we're going out every day, and we're making sure that they get long-term help, we're getting them on Medicaid, we're getting them help as far as methadone and euphonorphine programs, so that we're addressing why they're homeless, we're directing them in the right direction as far as mental health services and stuff like that. Well, that being said, I'm just saying that we need the city to provide a lot so that we can build a tent city based on the Las Cruces model.
Thank you, Vincent. Thanks for attending the meeting yesterday with those folks. And I just kind of reiterate something that I heard at that meeting. Father Rusty Smith has been working, you know, with the community for a long, long time and to me is one of the real thought leaders, if you will. And I found it really interesting what, you know, what he said, that when he first heard the idea of a tent, you know, formal tent camp or what we're talking about, he was opposed to it. But he's really come around to realize exactly what he said, that we do need to find a location, you know, there's a specific segment that needs this short-term solution while we have a long-term solution. So that was really, I was impressed by that because I had heard him say in the past that he wasn't sure that that was the answer, but he realized now that that's something we need to work together and create of. Thanks for your attendance.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicholas. Next is Emma Sanghavala, Michael Jensen, Hello, five.
Mr. President, council members, my name is Emma Sanghavala, and I'm the organizer of the Southwest Organizing Project. Thank you for the chance to discuss an issue that is vital to the soul of our city. At the Southwest Organizing Project, we've been scrambling to work with our brothers and sisters enduring homelessness at the Camp Faith because whether they were evicted from the First Street side or the AP side in Barrelos, the deeper issue is that what we are providing as a city is not cutting it. We call on the city of Albuquerque to work with groups like State Martens to develop a camp faith on the city of Albuquerque land where residents can be dignified and safe, just like the city of Las Cruces. We also urge to be considered in the council group, we also urge to be, we also urge you to reconsider the council move four years ago to discriminate the workforce housing trust fund, which helped to fund buildings like the 707th Street Building, which provided housing for near-homeless individuals and also helped them towards recovery. The fund was a far bigger priority in previous city councils, providing over eight million dollars the bond cycle for affordable housing. And now that's been cut to two-point-four million dollars for the upcoming cycle to be put before voters, and as a result, we're seeing a very clear slowdown in affordable housing projects to address homelessness and the lack of access to workforce housing, especially in like the projects like the regional sports complex on a 100-foot street. We've got some serious work to do to get our city's core. The people at Camp Faith and the Southwest Organizing Project believe that our city is better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Elson Beal, followed by Dinah.
Mr. President, esteemed councilors, I'm a new citizen to Albuquerque, and as a new citizen, I went to the council's website to just get some information in preparation for addressing you tonight. And one thing that I read was very impressive to me, that part of your mission statement, I guess you would call it, is that you have the legislative authority to adopt ordinances and resolutions conducive to the welfare of the people of the city, and that this issue of homelessness that we're addressing is not being laid on the community alone, but you're willing to shoulder that with us. So thank you for that. I speak to you today as a person who has worked on the issue of homelessness in Denver. I provided housing for people living with HIV/AIDS, with supportive services, with counseling, medical help, all that was in place. So I know that it can be done and that we, and that a city that can provide lovely, beautiful dog parks can certainly provide housing for our brothers and sisters who have a need. The greatness of a city rests upon its regard for the least empowered, the least able, and the least healthy. The greatness of a city rests upon the dignity and well-being afforded to all of its citizens. The ideals of our heritage and the legacy that we must leave our children must not be found in monuments or lighted buildings or economic development or land development, but our priorities must first lie in the humane and dignified existence of the citizens of this city. Our first priority should be a society, to a society, to a city, and to a neighborhood should be human life, and nothing is more important than the individual and their dignity.
Thank you. Next, Nicholas, followed by Dinah Magris, followed by Rob Chavez.
It was really good to hear that you mentioned and spoke about homelessness tonight, and also that you spoke about Aba Boye. So Aba Boye has, it's almost a year since he's been killed. You also mentioned that some people are wary of going into shelters, making use of the services because they don't trust the system. So I'm a member of ABQ Justice. Our group has been working with the people of Tent City since October. We have at times spent nights there. Contrary to some councilors, we actually have been working there, we are working, wanting to work with the city. Problem is that we don't always see that the city wants to work with us. And I hear your frustration when you say that people say, oh, the city's not doing anything. Problem is, if you take it, Aba Boye was killed a year ago. He wasn't the first homeless person in the city. This is a very old problem. Camp Faith is also not the only settlement of its kind here in the city. There are several others. So I'm wondering why we are now talking about it now that it has already reached crisis proportions? You said it correctly, it is crisis proportions. So why are we now talking about it? Why didn't we have a proper comprehensive plan? So please, the people have already been dispersed again, so out of sight, out of mind, but please, just make sure that there is now a comprehensive plan for the next time, because the next time is going to come, it's certain.
Next, Nicholas, followed by Rob Chavez, followed by Tent.
Good evening, President Gardner, members of City Council. When we let people suffer beyond humane conditions, it is a reflection of our own ability to improve. New Mexico is dead last, and I'm almost thinking by design. There is a reason why there are three thousand families on a waiting list, because New Mexico is dead last. I have been here, I am, I am a native, I'm a Bucania original. I am. And the whole time that I have been here, and it's been many decades, I've never seen our banner advance, and I want to know why. We are dead last from poverty, and we are first in police violence, we are losing jobs, we have a mayor who lies about us and lies to us. We have failed leadership, and I don't know why New Mexico is dead last and the only other state that comes before us is some humbly state like Mississippi. We're hungry, black people, and we're one of the last to abolish slavery. Non-progressive, they are, not were, but are, and yet we still stand before you in struggles year after year, decade after decade. It's like the season of the crop, and it's our people doing the picking in the valley of the dog, it's our people that we let starve, and I don't know why. I don't know if you can talk to the mayor and ask him to do something. Perhaps Robert Perry can because he has the ear of the mayor. And I have reserved, in spite of what I have heard about him, because I have faith that someday he will maybe lead this city because nobody else is. So the last resort, Rob Perry. New Mexico is dead last. New Mexico is indeed dead last. They are fracking our lands, I mean, who is against Mother Earth legitimately? The Bosque, failing schools from teachers, and the list goes on and on, they're going to bust our unions too.
Thank you. Next, Nicholas, followed by Stephen Chavez, followed by Sally Peters.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, thank you for hearing my words tonight. I wanted to just add my voice to the many voices that have already spoken this evening. You know, I've observed over the last few weeks that as that strip of First Street where the Tent City was, was cleared in the name of building an innovation trail, and as the Bosque was bulldozed in the name of innovation in our city, that I wanted to speak out as an individual citizen and let the councilors know that I'm not okay with this type of innovation. As a citizen of Albuquerque, I want to see innovation that recognizes the value in every human life in this city and empowers and adds capacity to every member of this community. And I want to see innovation that strengthens our ecosystems instead of destroying them. I'll finish, this is a little bit of maybe a radical statement, but I'll finish by saying that the people are sacred, the land is sacred, and we need to hold that near to our hearts as we proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Isaac Penney, and councilors. My name is Marshall, and I am from Barrelos. There's been a lot of talk already about the Tent City, so I will leave that out of this and make it short and sweet. The only methadone clinic that I know of in Albuquerque is way up by the airport and not accessible. I would ask for one downtown. The drugs and problems in Tent City, those people need help. And after, having worked in a methadone clinic, I know that they're not all bad, they have, they're human beings and they have no resources, they're lost people. As far as Barrelos goes, I think it should be declared under historic preservation. It's a beautiful old neighborhood, and at one time, I understand, it was thriving and it needs to thrive again. I also, you know, I'm all aware behind halfway housing, and also I would suggest a work-study program. There are all kinds of things that people can learn. I work with development, I've been delaying people before, they have jobs, many of them can work. And I also understand that a substantial amount was cut from, that was slated for the workforce trust fund. I was given the names of council, Councilor Harris, Lewis, Jones, and Winter, who were asking for that cut, and I want it back. I think we need it, and we have a crisis with Barrelos. And the last thing is, we're only as strong as our weakest link. These people need help, and I don't believe that...
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.